Good evening, everyone. It's December 6, 2022, and it is time for the Galton City Council meeting. It is 6:01, and we will call this meeting to order. We'll begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the pledge, the allegiance this evening. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our invocation, and Vice Mayor Fennell will lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Let every heart pray. Congratulate God, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts tonight. We thank you for this blessing, counsel, I despair of God, and thank you for the 20-plus, five years that I have served on this council. And I pray that this council will continue to do great things for the city of Galton. And as we do your business tonight, I pray that you would be in the midst of it and let everything we say, everything we do, be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, and every heart said amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ketchel, you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Thann.
Here.
Councilwoman George is absent. Councilman Hayes is absent. Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. You have two sets of minutes before you this evening. The first is from November 1, 2022, City Council meeting, and the second is from November 15. Motion to approve both by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any corrections or additions requested? Seeing none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. At this time, we'll have public recognition on agenda-related items. Any item that's on this evening's agenda may be addressed. Yes, that you come forward, give us your name, your address, and you will have five minutes to speak. There is also a public hearing tonight. If your concern is with that development, you may wait and speak under the public hearing. If it's anything else on the agenda, you would speak at this time. Public hearing on agenda-related items is now open. And I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And go now to mayor's comments. First of all, Councilman Alexander, you spoke as if you were through tonight, but you're not. On January 3, we will be swearing in our new council. We will be having a reception that evening prior to the council meeting for our very special outgoing council members at 5:00 p.m., so you better be there. And just so that you know about that, let me tell you about a few other dates coming up. The National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is on the 7th. Flags will be at half-staff tomorrow. Galton Public Library is having their holiday open house on the 8th from 5:00 till 7:00. This Saturday and Sunday is the Galton Coin Show at the Galton Civic Center. There's also a Breakfast with Santa at the Galton Civic Center on the 10th. The Christmas, I guess the coin show is on Friday and Saturday. So on Saturday is the Breakfast with Santa at the Galton Civic Center from 9:00 to 11:00. The Galton Christmas Parade is at noon, and there is an open house that evening at Flight Solutions, hangar A14. This is a fundraiser for the airport manager whose family is suffering some serious illness. Next week, we are having our employee Christmas luncheon at the Civic Center Gymnasium from 11:00 to 1:00 on the 16th. And then on the 17th, it's my favorite event of the year, the Reis Across America Ceremony at the Galton City Cemetery that happens on Saturday, the 17th, at 11:00 a.m. And then on the 18th, it's Councilman Alexander's birthday, perhaps my second favorite day of the year. I do want to say big thank you for all of those who have been working hard to generate such fabulous holiday events in our community. Just last week, we had Tuba Christmas, we had the Christmas tree lighting, the Mary Mantles at Rosemont happened, and I'm sure lots of other events throughout the city. So many of these are put on by nonprofits, and they do such a lovely job of sharing the holiday spirit throughout the community that I really do think contributes to the essence of what Galton is and why it's so important to so many people. At this time, I will conclude mayor's comments and move along to the regular agenda. First item is the public hearing on ordinance 02211-63.
Mayor, we got our annual report from the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kimball. I'm just used to doing all the stuff at the first of the meeting. I failed. I failed. Mr. Kimball from Galton Department of Electricity, our general manager, is here to present the annual report, and I know it's going to be a stellar one, and again, my apologies.
Glad to be here. Apologies accepted. Proud to be here with you tonight to give us a report on the financials at the Galton Department of Electricity. And if you have your booklet with you, return to page 5. I just pointed out a few things, highlights of Galton Department of Electricity over the past year. We've added 1,348 new customers in fiscal year 2022, and that is an increase of 5.89%. I think in the past, you've heard me say that we were the fastest-growing electric system in the valley, and then last year we were third. This year, I'm pretty sure with the 5.89%, we'll be first again. It's the fastest-growing electric system in the Tennessee Valley out of 153 systems. Galton has 545 customers per employee, and why is that number relative? It's the sixth-highest customers-per-employee ratio among any TVA distributors out of 153. And if I ask the board, why tell the board that, the electric board, why do I say that, John? We're the best, because we do more with less. We do more with less. And just a couple of things. The other piece that I will point out is that Galton Department of Electricity, if you do not know, pays almost $1 million in lieu of taxes each year. We do not require anything from the budget from the city. We're self-sufficient, and also, we have not had any debt in, I think it's 30, was it 36 years now? 36 straight years, we have no debt, which is an amazing feat. I cannot take credit for all that, it's past history, but I have had the blessing to carry that on. The one thing, of course, that's important in the report is you go to page 43 in the very back, the letter from Denning and Cantrell, down at the second paragraph to the bottom. During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weakness. And then if you flip it over to the next page, there at the top paragraph, the end of it, "The results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the government auditing standards." So all that says, and y'all well know this, that we had a clean report, is what I'm passing on to the council tonight. And do you have any questions?
I do. With all this increase in the citizens, is this putting a strain on our infrastructure?
On our infrastructure, the one piece, we've been in really good shape up to this point, the one piece that we're looking at now as far as electrical infrastructure would be, we will be needing a substation on the north side of town. And we'll have to do that within the next little bit, probably, to serve the citizens of Galton. It's a slow process, you know, of course, you know, when somebody, for instance, the Nexus Development, when it starts, it'll be a slow process of adding load and growth to the system, but we need to be in process of looking forward to a substation in that area pretty soon.
And the transformers, are you easier to obtain them now than you was back a couple of years ago?
But we're still, I would say, we're still in long delivery. Because of our growth, we've stayed ahead of some of that, that some of the other systems have had trouble with, and we're in pretty good shape as far as our inventory goes. We usually keep over a year inventory, and we're probably inventory year-plus right now as far as transformers goes, so we should still be able to serve the needs of Galton moving forward, even though it is a challenge with material right now.
I meant to tell you, I actually interacted with someone who works with a company somewhere here in the region, I think, of course, can't remember the name of it, but they are in the business of refurbishing transformers. Are you familiar with that?
We have used refurbished transformers in the past, and there are companies that do that. Personally, I'm not real crazy about that, because I've had past experience of taking refurbished transformers, and they don't last as long as the new ones. So you get refurbished, and it'll last 10 years, 15 years. If you get a new one, it'll last 30-plus.
I wouldn't necessarily expect them to, but then the vice's circumstance. But more importantly, you didn't mention your second bullet on page 5.
Which one was that? Oh, that we're in the top 10 of lowest rates still. Yes, we are.
Even with all the growth, we remain among the lowest rates.
Even with all the growth.
I think that's accomplishment and well worth highlighting.
Yeah, it is.
Who has questions for Mr. Kimball?
I would be remiss if I did not mention John Alexander coming off our board. He's done such a great job as far as the electric department goes, and we will miss him greatly, and looking for another appointee, a great appointee from the mayor for the Galton Department of Electricity's board moving forward in January.
Hey, Mark, I really enjoy working on the power board. Thank you for allowing me to be the chairman of the power board, and I learned a lot, learned a lot. It's just been great, and I thank you for all you do. And Mark is really, really crazy about his employees. He's always looking out for them, and I admire you for that, Mark, so thank you for all you do. Appreciate you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Okay, now we'll move to the agenda. Again, I'm so sorry. Item one, public hearing on ordinance 02211-63, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance City Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning two parcels totaling 10 acres of agriculture residential district to MU mixed use residential with a preliminary master development plan for Harris Lane condos located north of Harris Lane, East to Greenlee Boulevard, authorized in visions being indicated on the future zoning atlas, repelling conflict of ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open for ordinance 02211-63. If you'd like to speak to it, you may come forward at this time and do so.
Good evening, Mayor Brown. Good evening, council. I'm Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike, and I did want to just say that it's disappointing to see how Galton is becoming the city of apartments and townhomes. 134 condos or townhomes, I've heard it called both things, depending on the meetings that I've been to, on 10 acres. And we're just losing our charm and a lot of our character and a lot of what makes Galton special. This is something where it was just a row of estate homes there, and then the apartments got put in and people moved out, and now they're selling to a developer, and that whole row will probably just eventually become very high-density townhomes. So I'm afraid that that's going to happen over on St. Blaze next, because they just cut down the tunnel of trees on that beautiful road that had so much charm, and it was so much about what made Galton special, were these little nooks of pretty streets that are lined by trees with estate homes. And now that they're putting in high-density houses and townhomes along that road, what's going to happen to all of those estate homes that are there? They're not going to be happy. They're going to sell, and they're going to move out, and developers are going to buy those houses and put in townhomes there. So I'm just looking at the big picture of what's clearly purposely being done, because we know from reading Plan Galton that the plan is for us to be a high-density housing, to be a dormitory for Nashville, and it's very disappointing. And I think that people don't like it, and people are angry with all the high-density growth that's happening. So I just wanted to voice that, because that is what I think. I'm super disappointed. Thanks.
Okay, evening. It's Patrick Reeners, 317 Malone Drive. Me too. Thank you. I came from Philadelphia in '99. Thanks for taking me. I didn't try to clog the city, but I think a lot of people come here from other places, and they might even be residents from other places. We don't know yet. But the way I look at it here is I'm going to talk about facts. I'm not going to hypothesize about some BS and try to run y'all stir-crazy, like what I've seen going on. And I'm glad you're building it, because we got high rental places, high, and that would lower it a little bit. And thank you, and I only hear one or two people talking, I don't hear the whole city up here talking. So how many people are angry? You got to look at that, too. All right.
Evening all. Pascal Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. You all know we went through an election, and I got elected to represent my district, District 3. And until January 3, I'm a citizen, but I'm still, I'm start to get phone calls, and you all know the platform I ran on was trying to stop the identity development. So the people of District 3 basically voted to avoid identity development. Harris Lane, you probably all know it. Again, it's a small, two-lane road who connect to Nashville Park through the railroad. And if you drove there, because it's a cut through from Greenlee to go to Law's, that's where basically people do it, you know it's not an easy way to come from Nashville Park to Greenlee. It's really narrow, it's a 90-degree turn. So it's not, I don't think it's so late to add that development in it. In your packet, three weeks ago on a committee meeting, you had, actually, it was really interesting, Attachment 6, who the trip generation on that development. So if you look at what is now, actual, what's sitting there bring 10 trips a day. If we build that development, we're going to add 752 trips a day, just for that 10 acres. I got told that the person who bought that agricultural land, because it's still agricultural, we still have few, has already made offer on the four parcels near that agricultural land. That means he's going to acquire, if we authorize that development, he's going to acquire 20 more acres, meaning that what you think is going to come here to do the same thing. So now, on Harris Lane, instead of adding, just with the development, 752 trips a day, we're going to add three times that, plus what's already approved at the front, the commercial slash apartment extension. How are we going to do that? How that road's going to be able to sustain that? So if on top of that, you think long-term, and you think of the 386, we already got approved, and all the traffic will probably going to have to be rewarded when they're going to start to build the extension, how are we going to do that? We need to start looking long-term and just note in front of our nose, and start, you know, thinking of the worst-case scenario. Like I said last week, if there is an issue and the front is blocked, and the fire has to go on the other side, and there is a train passing by, the fire has no access. Again, it's worst-case scenario, but some of us had been in worst-case scenarios, we're thinking about it. The chief say, I'm in the code, but it's not because I'm in the code that that should be done. We need to think a little more further. Again, people in that district don't want identity development, it's spoken, so we need to listen to them. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public hearing on the ordinance 02211-63? Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. Moving to item two, which is second reading on ordinance 02211-64. Vice Mayor Fennell, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is ordinance appropriating funds for grants, motion to approve.
Question by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on these? All right, this is second reading on ordinance 02211-64. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, indicate by saying no. Does pass unanimously. Item number three is retail liquor store certificates of compliance with applications from Ms. Ketchel, our city recorder.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the new law of the retail liquor stores became, went into effect on November 1. The new law, the changes are that they are now required to have a lease, they are required to meet the zoning requirements, and there is a one-mile requirement from each liquor store to the other. So I had seven applicants on November 1, no, six applicants, I'm sorry, and I have two that I am presenting tonight. The first one is under the corporation name of R&amp;R Galton Liquor Corporation, and is the owner here tonight? I asked that the owner, because that was one of the requirements. I spoke with him, and he was supposed to be here, but he is not. So I'll move on to the next one, which is going to be Liquor King, and I know the applicant is here and representing by Mr. Stampley, Joel Stampley.
Yes, so the applicant is a Vija, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher this, but Vija Lakshmi Incorporated, and that consists of two shareholders, which is Manisha bin Patel and Baldipa Patel, and the current location, or the proposed location, is 1380 East Broadway, Suite C, Galton, Tennessee. I believe the closest liquor store is Broadway Liquor, which is approximately 1.3 miles away, and we've done background checks for all, they've had their clean records, model citizens. This is a vacant piece of property, approximately, what'd you say, 1,500 square feet, 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, 2,000.
Maybe 2,000, so this isn't some major Walmart or type of liquor store. They look to employ maybe approximately three to five full-time employees, and just here to provide support and answer any questions that you may have.
Not say the minimum size on the liquor store.
And I'm ballparking that square footage, but it's not, it's not a massive, it's not a, the Buc-E's of liquor stores, so.
Yeah. From where Broadway Liquors is right now, is that a mile towards town or past, past, past Broadway Liquors?
It's going towards the country club. Past, yeah, going kind of, I guess, northeast, I guess that would be from downtown.
Mayor, we got two council folks that's not here tonight, and this has been such a hot topic for a long time. I'm going to ask that this be deferred to January.
That be past 60 days from when they submitted?
I'm not sure when they submitted.
We submitted the November 1st.
We're supposed to determine within 60 days, I believe, where it's automatically granted, so. Ms. Ketchel can correct me, but I think they meet everything, they've met all the requirements.
They have, they have met, and I have to say that the IT department has been very helpful with the mapping and the mileage that was, so they're very accurate on that. Our planning department also helped with the zoning, so I had to make sure, and they did all of that. Of course, the attorney looked at the lease and background checked the police. Requirements that we have asked them to meet, so.
Is this, is it going to be in a new, new construction building, or is it already?
No, it's, Suite C is a vacant building. It's a, just a gas station convenience store. But no, it's a, it's a.
I'm just trying to picture where that is, but.
Sure.
I don't have the ordinance pulled up, but it's set out in the ordinance, the requirements that have to be met, and Ms. Ketchel is telling you they've met the requirements. And they still have to go through the planning and zoning processes, but. They still have to go to the state as well.
Sure.
What do we need to do?
Most approved.
Question by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion?
Awesome. Thank you. What are we approving?
I don't think. She said that the owner has to be here, that's one of the requirements.
I think that is one of the requirements that the council asked. I don't know if it's may or shall, or.
To look at that, that's not a requirement. Let's put on the one while she's doing that, we can come back to it if we so decide. Are you okay with that, Councilman Overton? Councilman Alexander? Okay. So for approval for the Liquor King applicant, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.
One abstention.
Does pass 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, you all. Yeah, I'm going to let her continue to look that up, and I'm going to move along to other business, because I do have an item with the CIO position that I want to discuss with you, and then she will found that by the time that we finish discussing this. You may recall from last meeting, you made the decision to have an offer extended to a CIO candidate. They declined the position, they accepted another position, significantly more pay, somewhere else. And so I have spoken to another candidate that was a money finalist that we interviewed. She's someone I feel good about. We do have some differences on what she wants from her position. I don't know if we'll be able to reach an agreement on what she's seeking, but in the case that we do, I'm going to recommend that this council support, and I'm going to pass out a different resolution than the one that you have, in fact, I'm going to pass that correction, that we, you know, give the mayor the. That we, you know, give the mayor the authority to negotiate with Jennifer LaFever between steps one and five of the salary chart for CIO. And the initial start date on this is also absent because I would have no idea at this point when she would be available to begin work with the city.
Most approved.
Thank you, Councilman Overton. Okay, most of my Councilmen, Overton, second by Vice Mayor Fennell, is there any discussion, questions?
Can I, if, if need be, can you open it back up?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
If we don't feel comfortable with somebody, then we need to move on.
Right, and, and that's why I'm, you know, just being real straight with you, to say, I don't know if we're going to agree to terms because there are some things that she has spoken of that just really would be out of bounds within the city government. Very proper for the private sector, but not so much for city government. And so if that's a non-negotiable for her, we won't be able to hire her, but if it's not, then we might. So, and with it being the time of year that it is, I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure that we are covered in case it is an opportunity for us. She was here yesterday, she spent some time with some members of the original panel, some time with our current CIO, and with me and a few other people, so. Very confident that she can do the job, but. All right, so I have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no, thank you very, very much. Ms. Tom McCauley, if you want to go back to item number three?
Yes, and so what it, what it says is that city council may require an applicant to appear before the council to address any matter related to the application and her business. City council may also request that the applicant furnish additional information regarding the applicant's application and or business.
So in your opinion, does that mean we could turn it down based on them not being here and expecting them to have been here?
No.
This may. Now, what you could do is, we are having a meeting, a work session next week. I don't know that this has to be at a council meeting, it didn't used to have to be a council meeting. You could do a special called meeting and require them to be here, and then if they don't come, you could deny it on that basis. But I don't know that you can just deny it on the basis that they didn't show up tonight, even though the city recorder asked them to be here. The council has not required them to be here. Like we, you didn't say be here or not, but instead of may. Also seems like, you know, when we have the opportunity to tell them whether or not we want them to be here, we have to see it first. And in this instance, because of the sixty days, I'm thinking we need to change the sixty days. That's state law, that's state law.
My question would be, I mean, if Ms. Kitch was vetted it and everything's been vetted out, I don't see any reason why we don't pass it, move on. I mean, it's just because we're not here, Ms. Kitch was talking to them, representatives, and she's vetted it and said everything's okay with it, so, you know, I'm making a motion to move it past it.
I'd like to know what it is, we don't know anything about it. Now, where, where, who, and what's the name?
Ms. Kitchell can tell you all of that, she has all that information.
I, my opinion is, Jimmy, I go against what you said, I just feel they need to show up so we can, we might have some questions we need to ask. We don't always agree on everything.
I know, but we don't want to penalize them for not, for not, you know, being here.
But Connie told them that they needed to, it was her opinion at that time that they needed to be here.
So my, my opinion is you can't deny it on that basis, but you could do a special called meeting immediately before or after, probably after your work session next week, require them to be here and put in, you know, that, that you're requiring them to be here to answer questions about the business. Then if they don't appear, you, you could, but based on what we have right now, I don't think that legally you should deny the application. I'm so sorry that we're disagreeing, but that's my legal
I still think that we, you know, it may help one way or the other for you to feel more comfortable or not to know what it is and where it is.
Right, and so you, you can have, that's what I'm saying, you can do a special called meeting and and if you want to change the, we can amend the ordinance at any time, we can look at that at the next work session if you want to, to amend this ordinance to say they shall appear. And, and then going forward, you can, but based on the way it's written currently, I don't
Do we have time to advertise a special called meeting?
Yes.
I make a motion we have a special called meeting.
I still would like to know now, I still would like to know who it is, where they're proposing and
Okay, Ms. Kitchell can answer all of that for you right now.
And the special called meeting
With them to appear.
I understand, but I'm trying to think, because, you know, they've ceased the publication of the news examiner effective immediately. So it would have to be a Gallatin news publication, I don't know what they're doing.
There's really not a
Publication requirement anymore?
There is a publication requirement, but we are staying it tonight, we can put it on our website, we can publish it a lot of other places. We're going to give the one person who is required, we can send him the order that there's a, and so I, I think we can meet the requirements for publication.
And I will apologize that I didn't supply any information tonight because all of the applications have their personal information on it, which I cannot share. So, but I can share where it is, and it is going to be at sixteen eighty Nashville Pike. And of course, it will be a new construction, it will be in Kennesaw. And so that's where, and, but other than that, I'm not sure exactly, I could not go out there and tell you exactly where.
It meets the one mile requirement?
It does meet the one mile requirement, yes.
For both the plantation and the one that was approved earlier this year.
I think it's only fair to give them a second chance to notify them to be at the special called meeting.
I think your only options are to either approve it tonight or have a special called meeting. I, I mean
I try to do both.
Well, I know, but I mean, but without the information, and I understand.
That's why it's best to let them come in, get them to the special call, notify them to be there, and then we can decide on the A and A. In proper time. So we got a, a motion and a second for a special called meeting?
I think we do. Immediately following the work session next week. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Official notice, there will be a special called meeting for R and R, R and R Group Liquor Corporation following the regularly scheduled work session. They should pay for that.
Going to stay in here, okay, got you. One in favor, one abstention. All right, so those, that was my item of other business, who else has an item of other business?
I do, ma'am. Mayor, I'm not going to be at our next work session next week because of a prior engagement for nonprofits I have for a holiday event. So I just wanted to tell everybody how incredibly honored and humbled that it's been to serve our great citizens of Gallatin for the last sixteen years. We have one of the best cities in the entire state of Tennessee and the entire United States, and I'm very, very humbled and honored to be able to serve them as long as I have. And, and thank you all for your leadership. Thank you for, as you know, our city is probably one of the most financialist, sound cities in the state of Tennessee. And it's because of your leadership and everything that you guys do, and I appreciate that very much. And I just want to say how honored I've been, and, and thank the public and, and for the many, many years that they've put me on the council, and I appreciate everything.
Overton, like I told Councilman Alexander, you're not through yet either, expect to see you on the third. But I would suggest that your leadership has been an integral part of the comprehensive leadership. And I know that there are many who are very grateful for not just your service and being at the city council meetings, but your dedication to our community, because you extend yourself in every direction to help nonprofits and individuals and events. And Jimmy and I volunteered together long before we ever were doing this stuff.
I'm not going to hide under a rock, I've still got a lot going on.
We're not going to let you. Not going to let you. So Councilman Alexander?
I have two things, do we have an update on Clive Park? Mr. Fenton, anybody? Second thing I have is, I want to thank all of you for all your prayers. The only reason why I'm here tonight is because my son is here from New York. At the time, my wife had a stroke last week, and the Lord works in mysterious ways. So now I can spend, dedicate my time to her like I should do. So I, I may not be here for the next meeting, I'm going to try to be because she had a TIA on the right side. And she will not be still, she still wanted to get up and wash clothes and she had to use a walk, and sometimes she don't want to use a walker. So in the event that she fall, anybody, everybody cannot pick her up. So I think it's my duty, my obligation as a spouse to be there for my wife, and that's where I'm going to be. So I thank the Lord for all the blessing for these twenty-five plus years. But that's my top priority at this time is being there with my wife. So if my son's here, I'll be back, if he's not here, I won't.
We also appreciate your investment in this community and all that you have done. Bring cookies.
Fried chicken.
Now, I'm not doing the fried chicken thing. Council, Vice Mayor Fennell, you had something?
For Nick Tuttle, I had a tag, just a follow-up text now from Freedom Church. Are you familiar with the piece of property, the point four acres that was, and, and Bill McCord, you might be in the middle of this too. I think I remember being on planning years ago where we moved the entrance to Freedom Church. Now the church wants the four, the point four acres deeded back to them. And they went to the state, and the state said that they don't have the authority to do that, that it's in the hands of the city. Nick, I see you shaking your hand, are you collaborating with me? I'll do that, okay, thank you, that's it.
Yes, I just wanted to make a few comments. I know there's been a lot of talk in recent weeks about some issues in our charter. And just for the public's benefit, I wanted to read that to you. There's a statement in our charter that says neither the mayor nor members of city council shall hold any other elective or appointed public office except that of noted republic or be otherwise employed by the city of Gallatin. If the mayor or any other member shall accept employment with the city of Gallatin or any other elective or appointed public office, his or her seat on the council shall become vacant and filled as set forth in the charter. And that's in section, Article Three, Section One, and there's a lot of other stuff that's in the charter in that section. But I wanted to highlight that for you because I've been asked to do some research about what that section means. And a lot of people have a lot of opinions, and I've researched and talked with a lot of other attorneys. And so what it boils down to is what is the definition of an appointed public office? We know what an elected appointed office, elected public office is, but what is an appointed public office? And we have to go to case law to get that definition. And the Supreme Court as early as nineteen thirteen, and I believe in nineteen oh six, and then again in nineteen fifty-two, has defined that. And basically, an, an office, when used in the sense of one who holds a public office, is one that entitles, entitles him or her to a salary for the entire term, carries with it the idea of tenure for a definite duration, definite, definite emoluments, definite duties which are fixed by statute. So not all positions in government are a public office. It's only those that meet that definition are ones that are a public office. And there are some people who are required by law to serve on boards by state law. Some members of this body, as you heard earlier tonight, the electric board requires someone from this body to serve on that board. So we do have a conflict somewhat with state law, and state law supersedes our law. So what I am going, what I recommend that this body do fairly quickly is to amend the charter. And as you know, that can't be done very quickly because we have to go through the legislative, legislative process. It has to come here and then go to the legislature and then come back. But I, I think that we need to clarify that, I'm not a policymaker for the city, so I'm not going to tell you how to do it. I have opinions about what should be done, what would be the easiest way to fix this. But I do think that we need to amend our charter to, to clarify any confusion and the, also the, the one area where we conflict with state law.
Susan, if you're going to do that, don't we have a timeframe, isn't it January or first of February when you have to have all the bills done there to do that?
I've asked the mayor to speak with our legislators, so we will have to get on it, but I've asked the mayor to
I'll be with our legislators this weekend next, I feel like they can get that through.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I know we tried to do it when we done the, when we done term limits, and I think there was some conflict because we didn't get it any time. So we had to wait till the next year.
That's probably a little more universal with them or whatever, but
But anyway, I, I think there's a timeframe, so.
But I don't believe that the intent was to keep people that the city appointed to boards from serving on any boards representing the city. But we need to clean it up so that there's not that confusion going forward.
Susan, it was brought to my attention that I was on a board in the county that I didn't even know that I was on. I, I could not even recall the time that I even was called to a meeting or even showed up to a meeting in twenty twenty-one. But apparently my name has been put on a housing authority committee or something like that, I don't know. But I did send a letter today to Isabel to take my name off of that right there, and I, I didn't even know I was on it, never showed up to a meeting.
But that, that is really irrelevant because it's not a, it's not a
I doubt that it fits the definition of public office, but I appreciate you letting us know that.
So Susan, you said you had ideas of the easiest ways to do this, so
I do, but I'm not a policymaker, so I, the, you know, the very easiest way to do it, in my opinion, is just to take out the appointed public office and just, and if the council, the governing body wants to keep in their elected public office. I know Hendersonville doesn't have this in their charter, and I know at one point they had someone serving on BOMA and on county commission. I don't know that's what this body wants to do, so if you don't want that to happen, I think you keep that in and maybe just take out or, or appointed public office. And that clarifies that we're, there's, there's no further confusion going forward.
And I would prefer it be along the lines of, you know, elected or appointed office that may create a conflict with the city of Gallatin. That's kind of my preference, but
That's always, and that's one of our council wants to do, that's the interpretation there. And I will say there is something in the Tennessee constitution that you can't serve to lucrative offices, and that's probably where this came from. There's also in case law, you can't serve into incompatible offices, but that's very fact-based driven.
How did they determine that, or do you?
It's a case by case, I mean, there are many AG opinions, there's lots of case law. So it really boils down to, does one supervise the other? It's really just very fact-based, there's not a bright line rule. That's why I said it would, the easiest solution is to remove that altogether. But I am not a policymaker, so I'm not going to tell you how to do it, just advising you that we need to get it changed.
And Susan, just, just to clarify that, that I was trying to do the right thing is when I was on the airport authority, you know, once I got elected to the city council, this council over to tell me, say, well, you'll have to resign from the airport. I did immediately, you know, so if I've missed a board or two, I apologize, but I have not been to any other meetings other than this meeting.
I did as well, I mean, I was on the civil service board for a long time, and the day I got elected, I resigned. So I thought that's what we, you know, had to do, so I did.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of confusion about what it means, and without someone with a law degree doing a lot of research, trying to figure it out, there's going to be confusion over what it means, and so you've asked that I, and so I'm giving you my opinion on what that means.
Get this special call meeting or not?
Well, you can discuss it, I mean, we can put it on the work session agenda next week to discuss, and we can get the process started, yes.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Anyone else with any other business this evening? Okay, we'll move along to public recognition on non-agenda related items. If you have something you'd like to speak to, not on the evening's agenda, you may come forward, ask that you limit yourself to five minutes and introduce yourself and give us your address, please. Public recognition on non-agenda related items is now open.
Oh, good evening, Patrick Reeners again, three seventeen Malone Drive, and hindsight's twenty twenty. So it was like, I think, twenty twenty, I made a deal. Keep my deal, expect people to keep their deal. And then maybe if the same people were looking at the same deal from a And then maybe if the same people were looking at the same deal from a different perspective, like you got a citizen that comes to city hall and tells the truth. And possibly gets violated. I would think that the ultimate thing to do is what other people get. You know, someone reports that something happened to them and someone was filming it and makes a report that it might be looked at. Because, I mean, it's relevant. So, I mean, nobody by far is perfect. But I guess I heard there's a meeting on the third where people get sworn in. And I don't believe that some people should get sworn in. I got disputes, address disputes. Have you owned a property in some other state? Where principal money coming in, principal businesses, and claim to live in this state when you might live in another state too, and then maybe another state, and then maybe three houses in another state, and then come to one state and buy a house and then just sell it. Or it could have been sold to a developer, they sold them all, and then go to another house and sell it. But see, you live here, you're going to, this is where you're coming home to. I think there's a conflict. So I heard a comment about trees. I, I got experiences with that. I actually know people that buy lots of trees. It takes lots of trees to do what you do to me on the 19th. A lot of trees, a lot of paper. So it's going through. I'm filing it on 30th under true threats and international terrorism by nationalists. So we'll let the USC code take care of it, Ms. Trogger, look at it. But as far as I'm concerned, some people are going to get signed it on the third. They're probably going to lose their seat because I'm not playing. I was attacked. I was almost run over. And hindsight is 2020, especially because I made a deal in 2020. Keep my deal. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Anyone else?
Pascal Javens, 1334 Longwood Park, Menomis story and international terrorist. So funny. Jimmy, you bought a few times about the hotel tax to be used, that we're not using it to, for our field and stuff, and I agree with you. We need, we need to do that. And I was driving to work and listening to radio, and I heard that Nashville was doing what they call the Fan Dure Bracket City Live. And they call that a three-day festival centered around music and basketball. So they have music and they have a basketball tournament. So maybe that would be an avenue to, to look into. Because if we organize a festival like that, pretty Jeff will be happy, so we get our music back. And if we need, you know, really nice field to be able to organize that, I'm pretty sure we can, we can use that as a tourism staff. So that was just, you know, an idea like that, but I think maybe that's something we could look at. Just, you know, get that money invested on our field and get a nice festival, bring people in. That was Nashville doing that. So if you can do it, why, why can't we? I think there's maybe a, a way to, to do it. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items?
Thanks, Ruth Fennel, 1049 Blue Jay Way in Gallatin. First and foremost, Reverend Alexander, just want to offer prayers for your wife and also for your family to hope there's a quick recovery for that. Just wanted to kind of mention something, and it's really a question to the council. I don't know that you can answer in this venue, but I'm sure most of you know how to reach me, so you can get me an answer somehow or another. Last week, when I was out driving, I saw three different deer on the side of the road, then hit by cars. Obviously, there were, you know, vehicles damaged and deer dead in that. And then last week, as I was coming home from a meeting, there's an empty lot between the Gallatin, the South Gallatin, by the pub, the McDonald's by the Republics and Green Lea. And there were about 15 to 20 deer playing in that empty field. Okay, so they were gathering all together. My question is really, because as I was campaigning, I saw a lot of deer all times of the day and spoke with a lot of residents who were having to put wire around their shrubs and trees and all that kind of stuff to keep the, the deer from having lunch on their property. And so I'm really kind of concerned about the rising deer population in Gallatin. My, I've posted a comment on Nextdoor yesterday, and I already have 75 comments. So there is some interest in the community about this. Now, I'm in the south part of Gallatin. I'm not 100% sure what it's like on the northern side of Gallatin. But I'm here to ask the council and whatever appropriate departments would oversee this, if there have been any actions taken to look at the rising deer population. Okay, so Sean's saying yes, and he can let me know. But, you know, that, my concern is really the loss of their habitat through the growth of areas that, you know, trees are being swept down in, in what seems to be an area that's a loss of their habitat. So I guess I'm going to respectfully request that the city representatives, the planning commission, any developers really start looking at ways to retain as much habitat as possible. And that may already be being done, but it's not being done to the point where we're not starting to have issues with the population of the deer. I love those animals. They're adorable. I get them coming through my yard all the time. We even made our fence to where they could come through because we knew it was a path that they used. So they still have access in and out for there. But I'd really like to, to have the city start looking at how to mitigate that because every time a car hits a deer, obviously there's a loss of life for the deer, but there's damage to the car, there's trauma to the driver. You know, it's, it's just a situation that is going to start getting out of control if we don't take some steps. I know that Hendersonville had a similar problem. They took some steps, so maybe we can learn from what they did. And then the other thing is just, if you're going to be looking at the charter, I would encourage you to look at revising also your meetings to be more efficient. So today's meeting had, you know, three items on it. Are there ways we can consolidate so that there's one major council meeting and then maybe one work-study session and that type of thing? Because what I'm hearing from citizens is that they want to be engaged. They want to provide support to the councils to make good decisions, but there's conflicts, you know? School board also meets on Tuesday night. Well, they can't be two places at once. So if we can get some better coordination, if you're looking at the charter, maybe you can also evaluate if there's an option for meeting timing and things like that. Let's be as efficient as we can. Because when I look at all of the department heads that are here and their hourly salaries, we're getting up in, in some money. So let's be more efficient on that. Again, I thank you for your time. I appreciate what you guys do, and thank you for letting me have a few minutes of your time. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items? Seeing no one public recognition on gender-related, non, non-agenda related items is closed. Happy to share with you about the deer population. I've dealt with WRA and numerous residents extensively. Your solutions are to enforce the ordinances against feeding the deer or to harvest the deer. Deer will not be relocated, and there are habitat lands that aren't inhabited by deer at all. And then there are concentrated populations where they have a lot of deer. And they believe that that's largely because of people feeding the deer and the available landscaping for their, for the non-voluntary feeders. There have been some harvests within the city of Gallatin. Anyone is allowed to harvest deer in their own yard or to have someone harvest deer in their own yard. And that, according to CWRA, is the best way to control the deer population. They will help you coordinate if you want to donate meat to Hunters for the Hungry or help in any way.
One thing I'd like to say, Paige, is growing up in Hendersonville, starting in the 60s, I graduated school in 84, and I was a deer hunter. I've never, ever seen a deer in Hendersonville. In my dad's property, that whole neighborhood is growed up, Indian Lake Forest, it's been developed since the 60s. No new houses, no anything. I think a lot of the deers repopulate. I mean, the population's going up, and they're moving to every area they can.
In the 60s and 70s, there was not a deer. People hunted all year round, and nobody ever killed a deer. I mean, that was, I was like, why do you hunt? But.
There were no deer. They were brought in here. There weren't any at all.
Anyway, okay, y'all, we're at the end of the meeting. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, maybe your last second by Vice Mayor Pino. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening. Be safe going home. If we don't see each other again, have a Merry Christmas, and here's to a happy, healthy, and prosperous 2022.